All right, I'd like to get us started. Welcome candidates and audience members to the Mountain View Los Altos High School Board of Trustees Candidate Forum. I am Ellen Wheeler with the League of Women Voters of Los Altos Mountain View area. I am today's moderator. First, a few housekeeping items. Our forum will last about one hour and is being recorded by KMVT, a co-sponsor of our in-person forums. A special thanks to Jim and Jacob who are recording tonight. All League forums will be recorded and available on our elections page at LWVLA-MV.org about two days after each event, as well as on our YouTube channel through a link on our website. Some questions for candidates were submitted in advance through member and attendee suggestions. We have combined similar questions to cover as many topics as possible. The League of Women Voters is a nonprofit organization of all genders that promotes informed, active participation in government. We do not support, oppose, or evaluate political candidates or parties, but after careful study, we do take positions on some political issues. The League invites anyone who is interested in supporting democracy and local government to join us. You will find easy voter guides, lists of our forums, voter registration forms, and other helpful information at the League table, which is over there. Now, a little bit about the Mountain View Los Altos High School District and this office. Forty-five hundred students are enrolled in the district's three high schools. Ninety-eight percent of graduates go on to college. The district also has an adult education campus, as well as middle college at Foothill and the Freestyle Academy of Communication Arts and Technology. There is a five-member Board of Trustees, and in this election constituents will vote for two open seats. Each term is four years. Here is the format for today's forum. Candidates will make a two-minute opening statement. We've asked each candidate to include the strengths, qualities, and experience that make them a good choice for voters. Questions were selected to be relevant to all candidates and to provide useful information to the audience about issues in this race. Candidates will have one minute to answer each question. Finally, the candidates will have one minute to make their closing statements. Our timer in the front row will signal to each candidate when 15 seconds remain and when time has expired. We ask our candidates to abide by the following. Speaking order will be rotated, and I will give the order before reading each question. Time limits: When the stop sign is held up, I will say "thank you." Candidates will complete their current sentence before stopping. Respect: Candidates will not interrupt each other. Fairness: Campaign marketing materials will not be worn or visible in the room. Now, I would like to introduce, in alphabetical order, the three candidates who are running for the Mountain View Los Altos Board of Trustees. Vadim Katz, Alex Levitch, and Li Zhang. Thank you for participating in today's forum. Now, we are ready to begin. Okay, time for opening statement. Please include your strengths, qualities, and experience that make you the best choice for voters. And the order for this question will be Mr. Katz, Ms. Zhang, and Ms. Levitch. So, Mr. Katz?
Yes, good evening, and thank you for having me here. I've been a resident of Mountain View for 16 years. My wife and I are parents to two kids. My daughter is a freshman at Mountain View High School, and my son is an eighth grader at Block Junior High. Both my kids went to Springer Elementary, where I learned to appreciate the value of the community and public schools offer. I volunteer with Scouts Troop 31 and help out with my son's NorCal water polo team. Professionally, I hold a master's degree in computer science from the University of Maryland. I've been an engineering leader at Adobe and LinkedIn, where I supported many engineers from top universities, as well as some from non-traditional backgrounds, to grow their careers. This experience taught me how to become a good listener, support people in a way that works best for them while managing time and budgetary constraints. I'm running for the MBLA Board because I'm a strong believer that lifelong success starts early, and I want to represent MBLA district residents to empower high school administrators, teachers, and teachers to deliver safe, supportive, and academically rich environment for our children. I've attended every board meeting since announcing my candidacy and spoke to the board on pressing issues in the past. Among major supporters, I have been endorsed by both incumbents, who are current MBLA president and the longest-serving board member respectively, as well as Los Altos Vice Mayor and Town Crier. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Zhang?
Hi, everyone. I appreciate the opportunity to speak over here. I'm running for the MBLA school board because this community has given so much to my family. I moved here after I graduated from UC San Diego with a PhD in chemistry to the area. I lived here since 2001, and I want to give back to this community. My son recently graduated from Mountain View High School, and I've seen firsthand the high-quality education opportunities our school has provided to my kids. So, with this, with everything fresh in mind, with the experience with the school district from Almond Elementary School until Mountain View High School and Block, we've seen everything here. So, I would be a perfect candidate to offer some help for the school district to make it better. There is always some place we can make some improvement. My career evolved into in business later in my career, and I'm a finance manager and specialize in finance tax, finance tax, especially as the lead, team lead for the tax technology. I bring very strong problem-solving skills and focus, and I have, I'm very much focused on academic rigor. My role as a senior manager at Testa, and I'm also a vice chair now at LASD Bond Oversight Committee, has equipped me with the financial expertise needed for responsible management of the district resources. I'm also very deep-rooted in the community. I've been the organizer for Mountain View High School, T Parent Club, as well. I organized Book Wave for Albany Elementary School.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Ms. Levitch?
Hi, folks. Thanks for having me here, and thanks for taking the time to come and speak to all of us. I'm a mom to two students in Mountain View Los Altos Public Schools, not yet in MBLA, but in LASD, but in a few years they will be in MBLA. I'm also a longtime resident who deeply cares about our community and schools. I have decades of experience in building teams and products at top tech companies while running my own small business, resulting in a strong skill set in strategic planning and decision-making, budgeting, and leadership. I'm a former trustee at Bowman School, where I helped open up a new high school, develop a five-year strategic vision and plan, and improve math education. My motivation to run stems from a unique blend of passion, deep commitment to education that runs from childhood, and the strong skill set I developed throughout my career. I want to provide every student in our district with every opportunity. Having the board invest in a couple of, or actually multiple, key areas to deliver on that. Number one, academic excellence and equity, promoting innovative academic pathways and ensuring equitable access to all students. Number two, enhanced mental health services, expanding accessibility and destigmatizing mental health, making it a daily hygiene. Number three, college and career readiness, offering career exploration opportunities, preparing students for success beyond high school. Number four, teacher support and compensation, advocating for competitive teacher compensation and professional development opportunities to deliver a full package for our teachers. Number five, safe environment and modern facilities, investing in a safe environment and facility improvements to optimize for learning and well-being. And number six, last but not least, fiscal responsibility and transparency, ensuring budget transparency, financial planning, strategic resource allocation. I've been endorsed by Democratic Party, Women Activist Network, Los Altos Town Crier, the outgoing trustees, and Los Altos City Council members, Mountain View and Los Altos Hills Council members.
Thank you very much. Okay, now, we're moving on to the one-minute section. These are questions for each candidate. The first question will be addressed to Ms. Zhang, and then after she's answered, then we go to Ms. Levitch and then Mr. Katz. So, question one: What have you done to gain the knowledge needed to be an effective trustee? Ms. Zhang?
I've talked to board members on the MBLA, every single Board of Trustees on the MBLA school board, as well as some of the board trustees on LASD board. In addition, I've been on the MBLA Family Partnership Council, so that holds quarterly meetings. It's a venue for parents and families getting information from the school district and community back to the school district. In the last year, we were discussing what kind of graduate profile we should build for our student, not only successful academically, as well as in lifetime, in their life, career in the future. So, I'm very familiar with the board procedure because I'm very involved in the school district, not only as a parent, but also as a bridge of the communication. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Ms. Levitch?
Absolutely. As I mentioned, I'm a former trustee at a different school, at Bowman School in Palo Alto. I've served on that board for three years, and the experience has reminded me quite well of what's happening in MBLA. The type of reports the board reviews, the type of decisions and policies that the board actually passes, the discussions we have, and the information that is really crucial for the decision-making of the board and really assuring the thriving school district for the future. We actually opened up a new high school in the last three years. It used to be a K through eight school, which allowed me to understand what's important for a high school. How do we get the right educators in? How do we deliver on student priorities and prepare them for life after high school, college, and career? I've also attended all of the board meetings since I submitted my candidacy and have dialed online to many, many past board meetings as well. Lastly, I've done my listening tour with various community stakeholders, administration, teachers, trustees, city council members, college council members, board members, and have understood what are the priorities.
Thank you. I'm up. Thank you. Mr. Katz?
Yes, as I mentioned in the opening statement, I've attended every single board meeting. I've spoken to the board on pressing issues prior to even beginning to attend the board meetings at MBLA. I've spoken multiple times to, and attended LASD board meetings when my children were in elementary school. I've spoken to multiple existing board members at MBLA and solicited their feedback on the challenges that exist in our schools and how I can be the most effective, or the more effective trustee, as well as the community members' parents at Los Altos High School, as well as Mountain View High School.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Question two, and the order of respondents will be Mr. Katz, Ms. Zhang, and Ms. Levitch. So, the question is, what are the roles and responsibilities of a school board trustee? Mr. Katz?
Yes. So, a board member has to be a good listener and a good advocate for the community. The only people that a board member is responsible for is the community, not administrators, and their responsibility is to support administrators in doing the right things. So, it's an observing body. It's not the body that executes on things. It's a body that is responsible for making sure that administrators, such as a superintendent and assistant superintendents, are, you know, executing the right things on behalf of our community. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Zhang?
I believe the main responsibility of a school board is to establish policies that guides the school district, including setting priorities, achieving goals, and overseeing the budget, while also selecting and evaluating the superintendent, who implements these policies on a day-to-day basis, essentially acting as a governing body for the school district and advocating for public education, emphasize public education, within the community. School boards provide direction oversight for the professionals who manage the day-to-day operations of the school. They also provide accountability to the community. Often, the school districts, the school board, the district, the school district are the largest employer in the community, have the largest transportation and food service operations that have the greatest number of facilities to maintain.
Thank you. Ms. Levitch?
The school board's role is really to help the district, and both of the schools in the district, to really work towards a shared vision and a strategy towards assuring continuous growth and success of the students that the school releases. It has to listen to various stakeholders in the ecosystem, parents, administrator, teachers, other governmental organizations, and really bring that feedback and incorporate it into the plan, into the operations of the school. It is here to provide support and some sort of supervision for how the administrators are actually running the school, while not necessarily making decisions, but actually providing policies, setting policies, strategies, and really helping the administrators ask and answer tough questions that need to be addressed for the school to thrive, for the school district to thrive in the future.
Thank you. I think we are done with question two. Question three: What do you see as the top three issues facing the district in the next two years? We'll have Ms. Levitch, Mr. Katz, and Ms. Zhang. So, Ms. Levitch?
Sure. So, I'll actually start by talking a little bit about the strengths. I think MBLA has excelled in offering dual enrollment and vocational training, as well as providing mental health support in the wellness centers that have been established. Now, where we need more growth and improvement is making sure that the programs of dual enrollment and vocational training are equitably accessible to all students, in particular underrepresented groups, such as English learners, students with special needs, et cetera. What we could be doing about it is expanding the different mentorship programs for these students and enhancing career force courses in high-demand fields like technology and healthcare. Lastly, mental health accessibility must be expanded from various professional services that are offered to really thinking about prevention and peer support programs that can really deliver the best mental health support we can.
Thank you. Mr. Katz?
So, the top three priorities, I believe, are going to be student physical and mental well-being. Traffic is picking up as more and more companies are asking parents to get to work. Our devices are becoming an essential part of our lives, that's example. And it really concerns me that the students are, you know, so sucked into, so used to this, to the devices. It very well may affect their well-being already and in the future. The second priority would be academic and emotional growth, making sure that we reduce discrepancy in the level of preparedness that kids have as they enter high school from various junior high schools. And the third priority is teacher investment. How do we deliver productive workplace for teachers, motivate their well-being and being employed by the district, and deal with the cost of living in our area? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Zhang?
Yeah, I would like to first mention the strength. We have very, the best education you could get, very strong academic reputation. Our school district recognized for its academic excellence, reflecting high test scores and college admissions to prestigious institutions. We have very diverse communities. The district's diverse student population interests the learning environments and fosters culture exchange. We have very innovative program. MBLA offers a variety of innovative programs, including advanced placement courses and extracurricular curriculum activities tailored to students' interests. I do believe we still have space to grow, especially in mental health support. There's a need for improved mental health resources for students and staff, which can be addressed by expanding access to counseling and wellness programs. My personal interest for highlighting the need for more outdoor learning experience to enhance well-being.
Thank you. Okay, question four, and we'll start with Ms. Zhang, and then Ms. Levitch, then Mr. Katz. Please share a difficult team or group situation you experienced and what you contributed to the solution. Ms. Zhang?
Okay. Does this in a work environment, or kind of...
Anything you wanted to say.
Okay. I work at Testa. You know, we have a reputation of difficult situations. When we were opening the factory in Texas a couple of years ago, there was an incentive program Texas government provide to us is, because we sell a lot of cars, we have to collect a lot of sales tax, and then we have to remit it back to the government. It's a lot of work, paperwork. So, we were thinking, maybe we can negotiate with the government that half the way, oh, don't have enough time. So, anyway, so I was in this situation with a large team because a lot of teams are impacted, and they, people have all kinds of opinions, and, you know, because this create extra work for other teams. So, I was able to bring the team together, finally come up, solution is best for all teams in the company.
Thank you. Ms. Levitch?
So, for the last two decades, I've been doing product management at tech companies. And one of the interesting things about product management roles is that you have to manage and bring together a lot of different cross-functional stakeholders, legal, marketing, operations, engineering, design, and five more. I'm going to stop the list here. In order to do that, typically, all of these people have different opinions on what technology products we should be building and how to prioritize. And really, to bring people together to one aligned opinion, decide what to build, and then to actually build it, one has to really understand the different priorities of the different groups and build out a shared vision, principles, and goals, and really work together into the future, building out things gradually that address the concerns and the needs of all these groups. And that's what I've done every day for the past two decades and excel it.
Thank you. Mr. Katz?
I'd like to offer an example that's related to children because it's probably the one that I'm most passionate about, and I hope my employer isn't listening. So, my son is playing a very high-level water polo. They won the nationals this summer, so they're U.S. national champions, and he's 13 years old. So, he comes home one day and says, "My team," after winning, "my team isn't playing well. People are playing selfishly. They're fooling around." And he was very emotional about this. And so, the challenge was, how do I advise him to build those strong bonds, those relationships? How do I teach him how to talk to his teammate in a supportive way? And one, what I recognize is also that I need to teach myself, how do I engage with the parents? Behind the scenes, I reach out to the parents with whom I had good relationship, and that's key, of creating strong bonds and relationships. So, when there is a tough conversation that needs to happen, people know that you mean well and that you are all in the same, you are working towards the same goal. So, we as parents communicated well, the boys learn how to communicate well as well.
Thank you. Okay, question five, and we're going to go with Ms. Levitch, Mr. Katz, and Ms. Zhang. Provide your thoughts on the current district budget. Is there something that you feel is being under or over-emphasized? Ms. Levitch?
Yeah, absolutely. I would say that overall, the budget of the district makes complete sense, and I have an interesting comparison point to the other school I was trustee in. So, majority of the budget is mainly funded by property taxes and state funding, and obviously, we need to continue to sort of grow the population and grow the taxes to continue to get sufficient funds for the district resource spend. I've seen the funds being managed well. I looked into the different sort of statements, but I think what we need to do in the future has to align with the district's top priorities, things like mental health, things like teacher support, like academic excellence and equitable access, upgrading facilities. So, continuing to do things that really deliver budget transparency, potentially investing in simplified budget report, and really making sure we allocate funds in a line, in alignment with our strategic vision and goals is supercritical going forward.
Thank you. Mr. Katz?
Yes, first of all, it's difficult to answer this question until you are actually a member of the board and you're involved in, you know, internal discussions about the budget. One thing that I do appreciate about the way we manage the budget is that we pay the teachers one of the highest salaries, and that's really the key, because without teachers, we cannot provide adequate education. So, I appreciate the board doing this. The things that I would be watching out for are changes in the curriculum and the rationale for doing so, just based on some examples from other boards that I've observed. As a resident, I didn't get a good understanding of the value, so if elected, if I'm a member of the board, I will definitely advocate for a very strong transparency and justification for investing and bringing a new curriculum into place to teach, let's say, math or science.
Thank you. Ms. Zhang?
I believe, in general, the fund is pretty well-managed in our MBLA school district, and my understanding, 3% reserve has been done by the state standard, and two months of expenditures, 70%, is reserved as well. And also, we're reserved for post-employment benefits in the school district. The feedback about, by talking to the teachers, a lot of teachers are, they are shorthanded in certain classes. They would like to get more staff support in their class so they can serve the kids better on a more individual basis. So, I would advocate for allocating more funding for assist teacher in the classroom going forward. Thank you.
All right. Question six, halfway there. And we'll be asking Mr. Katz first, Ms. Zhang, and then Ms. Levitch. What is your favorite construction project on the campuses? Why did you choose that one? If it's necessary to prioritize future projects due to cost, which should be at the top of the list? Mr. Katz?
Oh, that's tough to answer. I haven't gone to high school in this country, so what we have is amazing, relative to my high school. I, both campuses, Los Altos and Mountain View, the new builders are, you know, they look very nice. So, I really, it's hard to choose. You know, I always appreciate having amazing theaters at schools, just because I didn't have one at all. They almost look professional, so I would definitely invest in arts or a place where kids are enticed to have arts. Like, I know the dance studio at Mountain View High, where my daughter participates in dance, is really nice. And I forgot the second part of the question, sorry.
Okay. Your favorite project on campus? And you're just about out of time, so I think I'll just go ahead. Ms. Zhang?
This building. It was not there when my son started four years ago. This was amazing, gave so much opportunities. We had the Moon Festival here with Ms. Kip, and also the student, you know, Student Union. We have all these, it's like a dedicated space for the wellness center and everything. This is just fantastic, as well as the building of the Freestyle Academy my son attended. And I couldn't say enough about, you know, the new constructions, how they contributed to our students' life going forward. If we can maybe... If we can maybe by talking to the teacher, the some teachers, science teacher would like to have some specific labs built for for them to facilitate teaching, better teaching for the students. That would be my wish.
Thank you. Ms. Levitch.
For me, it's also hard to choose because I'm in the same situation as Vadim. None of this existed when I was in high school. It was a very different experience. Also grew up outside of the US. That said, I'll talk about sort of strategic type of improvements. One of them is addition of new classrooms. I actually live right nearby, literally a few minutes walking distance, and I've observed personally the evolution of Mountain View High School, including the lights and sort of the speakers at the sports fields as well. And so the ability to add additional classrooms and deliver the right educational facilities for many more students accommodating all the needs of the district is super important. The second piece I'll say is that as a resident here, I was super concerned about the speakers and lights in the evening at the sports fields. But now that it's installed, it doesn't bother me as a resident. I can see how much joy and value it brings. In terms of the future, what we need to prioritize is improvements that deliver most value to majority of the students. If it is a sports field, the sports field. If it's the art center, it's the art center. But that's sort of my criteria.
Thank you. Question seven, we'll start with Ms. Zhang, then Ms. Levitch, and then Mr. Katz. How are students doing in their academic and mental health recovery from the pandemic? What should the district support to continue to improve recovery? Ms. Zhang.
I have a very personal experience. My son went to Mountain View High School right at the beginning of shutdown for his first freshman year. And he broke down one day, he start crying. He said, mommy, life sucked. You know, I haven't seen any of my classmates and I've been online all day long. I cannot wait until I go back to campus. I think when the campus finally opened again, he joined water polo. That make me had firsthand experience how difficult it could be with isolation. As well, my son have gone through I E P program in the school district. I cannot say enough appreciation for that. The teach there were special classes offered. So what I think could be potentially improvements, when he get off I E P going to 504, I think it's very overwhelming for the school assistant principal, he has 500 students under him. So if he can have some assistant in improving that program, I think it will be really ideal for the students.
Thank you. Ms. Levitch.
Yeah, mental health is absolutely critical. I don't see how students can really strive function or deliver great learnings without the foundation of mental health. And COVID certainly created a huge pandemic of mental health challenges. M V L A has started investing very proactively in the space, providing wellness centers, creating partnerships with providers such as CHAC and now switching to sort of Pacific. But we need to continue investing in the space and do a lot more. I will expect it to be an evergreen area where we always need to invest, continuing long term mental health services. Maybe we offer teletherapy, maybe after school mental health programs and really expanding access to mental health. We should also invest in peer support networks where students can actually help each other and generally make mental health a daily hygiene. Just like we shower, brush our teeth and exercise and eat, we have to take care of our mental health on a daily basis.
Thank you. Mr. Katz.
Yeah, I very much agree with Alex. Human interaction is what our kids need. Being cooked up at home and being able to see their friends or seeing them only through screen is is a terrible experience. And the remedy to that is keeping them busy. It's really responsibility of parents as well as I think school administrators to encourage kids to participate in club activities, anything that is interactive, where they get to spend time with each other rather than with their phones. We've all seen kids sitting around with phones next to each other and chatting over the phone, right? Like, I would be a big supporter of removing phones from from the classrooms, again, so that we can reinvigorate kids into actually looking at each other's eyes and talking to each other. I think that's really important. And and as well as teachers, which play a very important role, very different than a parent in 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 helping our kids to be successful in life. So having an interaction with 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 the teacher is highly important.
Thank you. Question eight. The district moved to trustee area elections in 2026. Public hearings are being held. What are you hearing from constituents about that change? And we'll start with Ms. Levitch, then Mr. Katz, and then Ms. Zhang.
Yeah, I will say this is a quite tricky, challenging and not very well understood change. If you were to ask the average person living in our district, what is the impact it could have and how should one actually divide into trustee areas? Majority of them are stumbled and they're not sure what to say. What folks do want is to make sure there is solid representatives from the community on the board and the district continues to thrive. Then then behind this change is of course very normal and making sure that underrepresented groups are able to have representatives on the board. And we need to find the right execute, the right way to execute this particular law so that we can have solid representation on the board and continue to function. Some of the common challenges I've seen in other districts that implemented that is that at times it's hard to find representative from every trustee area because some areas have low community engagement. So that's something we will need to address to the board.
Thank you. Mr. Katz.
Yeah, so what we hear is what is M V L A? What is elections at large? And are you guys going to stop being trustees two years from now? So really, education is important. And for that, you know, members of the community need to get involved to understand that, you know, what is the rationale behind it? It's a California law, so we have to be compliant. I think the district has handled it really well and in a very transparent way. There are going to be at least four meetings dedicated to the subject that people definitely encourage people to attend. There are going to be maps drawn and I think in starting with meeting number three and four and so on, maps will be presented to the community. People can understand how the district is going to be divided and know if any one of us who are elected are going to be elected for the next four years. So this will only take effect this 26 election.
Thank you. Ms. Zhang.
Yeah, in general, I'm hoping this divided trustee area is not going to divide us, it's going to unite us, right? I don't think it matters which which area you're the trustee. You should represent the whole district. We understand people from Los Altos or from Mountain View might have different viewpoints of their high school they live close by, maybe, you know, some resources not offer exactly the same. But when we divided trustee area, when I was listening in, I realized it was such a complicated problem that they have to have many, at least three, four rounds. So I'm hoping with the professionally handling dividing the trustee areas will be fair to the community. And regardless of that, whoever is going to be elected need to represent the whole district. Thanks.
Thank you. Question nine, and we're going to start with Mr. Katz, then Ms. Zhang, and then Ms. Levitch. How will you keep in touch with your adult and student constituencies' needs and wants? Mr. Katz.
Well, I've been a member of the community for many, many years, so my network of acquaintance is pretty large. Now that said, I am looking forward to hearing from people via communication as an elected official. People can always reach out to me. I encourage people to come to the board meetings and offer public comments. You know, I have kids in school. I oftentimes ask their friends for opinion and see, you know, what do you like about this class? What you don't like about this class? So I have access to who to ask. And and yeah, but in reality, it's all about people being willing to share their opinions with with the board. And that's why we have public comments during the board sessions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Zhang.
Yeah, I'm very deeply related in this community. I'm the president of my neighborhood association. I'm the social media chair of UC San Diego Bay Area Alumni Association. So and also my son have gone to the L A S D school district and then went to M V L A. So I know parents both from in Los Altos, from L A S D school area and also parents in Black and Mountain View High School, as well as Los Altos High School. So I'm very well connected. I was I was on the organization committee of Boy Scout, Boy Scout troop 33 in Los Altos. So I know parents in that group as well. So I'm, I think with my deep roots, I will reach out and I wanted I wanted all opinions heard before making a decision going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Levitch.
Yeah, so I will say we have to really focus on getting feedback from all the constituents that we have, from all of our stakeholders. That includes administrations, that includes students, that includes teachers, and that of course includes parents. Just like Vadim and Lee, I've lived here for a long time, have a large network of folks with whom I keep in touch to really understand how are folks thinking about the various issues, what's going well, what's challenging. And I think it is really important for a trustee to be very proactive in their communication and not just wait for folks coming in and sharing feedback, but actually continuously reach out and talk to people and proactively seek information about what's going on. We also have to be in close touch with various other governmental and other business organizations around us, whether it's city council or Deans College or any other organizations to really understand what's going on there, what's the feedback and how we closely collaborate to help the district thrive.
Thank you. Question 10, and we'll start with Ms. Zhang. Middle will be Ms. Levitch and end with Mr. Katz. M V L A has adopted a graduate profile, the district's vision for the 21st century, including the skills, character traits, social and emotional competencies needed for students to succeed in college, career and life. What do you think are the non academic traits most critical to success? Ms. Zhang.
I believe is the character. I've changed career in my life. I think you learn how to learn and also your character of no matter what your make it work. So I believe it's the endurance, the grits, the willingness to get things done to be successful. And academic skills you can, I mean, it's important, but the life skill and how to manage your finance, personal finances actually pretty crucial. So all these other things, the life skills are very important for you become a whole person.
Thank you. Ms. Levitch.
It is extremely important to define the graduate profile and actually seen us do the exact same thing in the in Baumont School where I was a trustee. And certainly, academic skills is one part of high school, but that's far from from all of it. To me, resilience and determination are key skills that we have to teach our kids to be successful in life after high school and throughout high school, whether they're doing college or have alternate career paths. And it really goes about role modeling by the administration and the teachers and student leadership in the community in the district to really showcase what that means, other ways to gain that knowledge, trainings, classes, opportunities to exhibit that. And the other very important piece of the puzzle here is mental health and really explaining to students and helping them understand how they should deal with the various challenges that they encounter in school to be successful later in life and become resilient and determined to reach their goals.
Thank you. Mr. Katz.
Yeah. So I've hired a lot of people as a part of my job. And something I've learned to appreciate is ability of a candidate to explain how they persevere challenges. If somebody had things easy because they're super talented or they had an amazing support from their parents, doesn't really tell me how well they will deal at the time when they face an obstacle for the first time in their life. How will they deal with feedback that they are offered, constructive feedback? So teaching our kids to be kind to themselves, to learn to persevere, just like other candidates said, to overcome difficulties in a way that they're, you know, continues to maintain their emotional strength and rely on other people around them and rely on their friends, on their mentors, on on adults in their lives and be responsible. I think that's a real key that will help them become good learners. Because once they graduate from high school and they continue to college or whatever else, they will be out of the house. And none of us, you guys, not me, won't be there to support them. They will be on their own. So learning that skill is really important.
Thank you. All right, we're up to our last question. And the order of answers will be Ms. Levitch, Mr. Katz and Ms. Zhang. And the last question is, ask and answer the question you wish we had asked. Ms. Levitch.
Yeah. Yeah, so I actually would like to talk about better support for teachers and teacher retention. I think that's extremely important and critical. We cannot have accent education without accent educators. So teacher retention is actually a key priority and really already pays one of the highest sort of compensation packages around us. That said, we still continue to live in a high cost of living area. And one way to look at the teacher compensation is actually looking at the full package and making sure that teachers get compensated well, have various development, professional development opportunities, and also consider housing benefits that we potentially could partner with various organizations and offer teachers either that discounts in apartment complexes or maybe over time even building affordable housing for teachers or partnering with other districts who may have available opportunities for affordable housing. And so professional development, housing benefits, and continuing to support teacher mentorships are key initiatives that we need to be doing in that space.
Thank you. Mr. Katz.
So I wish we, there was a question about how do we support our kids to analyze the world around them and recognize what is a fact and what is an opinion, right? They are overwhelmed by the information they get from TikTok, from YouTube, Snapchat and other social media. This didn't exist when, at least I was growing up. Being able to help them recognize what is a fact and how they base their opinions on this fact, how they express themselves, because everything is captured on camera these days. We want them to be responsible. On the other hand, we want them to continue to, you know, be themselves, right? They are 14s and 18s year olds. They in that range, they are eager, they are active, they are full of life, which is awesome. But there is just such a higher burden of responsibility on them that I believe existed when when I was growing up. So helping them succeed in that matter is really important.
Thank you. Ms. Zhang.
Yeah. I wish it could be asked is how can we make this public school teaching more more personal? I realize and a lot of people I talk to, they are always in school, there are certain teachers had lifelong impact on them because they made some kind of personal connection. So I was hoping maybe there is some way that teacher can get more assistance and then they can be individualized, their teacher making more connection with the students, then their teaching will be more impactful for the students.
Thank you. All right, we're up to closing statements. These will be one minute each. The order of speakers will be Ms. Zhang, Ms. Levitch, and then Mr. Katz. So one minute closing statement. Ms. Zhang.
I am committed to expanding academic opportunities, fostering life skills and promoting nature based learning, which I've seen benefit students through my years with Boy Scouts. I want to ensure our schools continue to be place, to be a place where every student can succeed, not just academically, but in life. I really appreciate these opportunities for you guys to come here and, you know, listening in to us about these discussions and I hope you were well for me. listening in to us about these discussions, and I hope you were well for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Levitch.
Folks, I want to provide every student in our district with every opportunity. And I want to remind you that it really relies on six key pillars that all of them need investment. Number one, academic excellence and equity, promoting innovative academic pathways and ensuring equitable access for all students. Number two, enhanced mental health services, expanding accessibility, destigmatizing mental health, and making it a daily hygiene. Number three, college and career readiness, offering career exploration opportunities and really preparing students for success beyond high school. Number four, teacher support and compensation, advocating for competitive teacher compensation and professional development as well as potential housing benefits. Number five, safe environment and modern facilities, investing in a safe environment and facility improvements to optimize learning and well-being. Number six, fiscal responsibility and transparency, ensuring budget transparency, long-term financial planning, and strategic resource allocation.
Thank you. Mr. Katz.
Well, thank you for your questions and for the opportunity to participate in this forum. Eric Walter, our new MBLA superintendent, said that board members represent consciousness of the community and through it help administrators deliver the best possible education experience. This perspective perfectly defines why I am running. If elected, I will deliver mindful partnership to other board members, administrators, teachers, and students to best prepare our kids for a fulfilling future. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, this concludes our forum. I'd like to thank the candidates for participating and for the volunteers who made this forum possible. The League of Women Voters believes that democratic government depends upon the informed and active participation of its citizens. And we hope that the insights you have gained from this forum will help in planning your vote. To look at a personalized ballot with information about your candidates and ballot initiatives, please visit vote411.org to see profiles of the candidates and answers to questions posed by the League. Visit our webpage, l w v l a m v dot org to see our election events, election information, and links to recordings of those that have already occurred. For the November 5th general election, please vote early and deposit your signed ballot in a ballot drop box or mailbox as soon as possible. Thank you for helping making our democracy work.